We're all set. We'll call meeting in order at seven o'clock with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Many times as I have said the Pledge of Allegiance, I have this fear I'm gonna screw up the word sometime. Okay, Clerk Cody, would you do roll call of the board, please?
Supervisor Monkey.
Here.
Clerk Cody here. Trustee Bills.
Here.
Trustee Brown.
Here.
Trustee Houck.
Here.
Trustee Thering.
Here.
And Treasurer Rice is not here at the moment.
Be happy to entertain any motions regarding the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Houck, support by Bills. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion to approve the agenda passes unanimously. We have no presentations this evening, no public hearings, so we'll open up public comment at 7:01 PM. And if you choose to speak to the public and/or this board, please state your name and address for the record, and comments will be restricted to three minutes. The quiet's kinda nice, but I wish someone was here. No one coming forward will close public comment at 7:02 PM. There was some brief discussion about potential for a closed session. I'll just ask if anybody's so moved. I'm not expecting that, but if you were, okay. With that, that takes us to item nine, report boards and comments. Did you end up sending the activity report?
I did not yet.
Okay, cuz I just hadn't seen it and didn't know if I maybe missed it. And with that, that'll take us to nine C, Planning Commission, EDA sidewalks, and ZBA updates by our director. It's been a long time since I've seen you, too.
So, thank you. Pleased to have the opportunity to talk about what happened literally yesterday. Our planning commission and our EDA board both met yesterday evening. I'll start with the planning commission. They had a very busy agenda. The first thing on their agenda was a public hearing for special use permit for an agrotourism business called Heirloom Grove. It's going to be a farm market, agricultural tourism, and type activities on property of Michael Road. This is at, the owner's Michael Clop, who's a very much a big farmer in the area. And he's very excited about this project. They both held the hearing and ultimately did approve the special use permit for the project. And then approved subsequently preliminary site plan for that project, so they'll be back for a final site plan approval. At this point, things are moving forward well with that. They also had a second hearing on a planned new development project. The second project, the same application we had, and this is for a project called the Denham Room Field. I think we may have talked about it. This project, they have a site plan approval for a three-story mixed-use building, commercial on the first floor, residence above. They have, because of some financing challenges, they have come back with a proposal for a four-story building that something that would require approval as a planned new development, so that's, they're pursuing that. This was the continuation of a hearing. The planning commission did not take action on the application. They asked, what, postponed action with the request for updated plans. So that one will be back in the agenda for them. We also had the phase two of the Isabella Citizens for Health over on Health Parkway. Existing building there, phase one was developed back in 2018, 2019. Phase two building, it did receive a combined preliminary and final site plan approval. They were able to pursue that basically because there were very few outside agencies that need to be involved in this particular project. Most of the minority granted approvals for the site, so they were able to pursue it in this combined process. That was also approved with one minor request for a change related to some exterior lighting details being decreased. And then the last item in terms of applications was a request from the folks building the Sam's Club Killing Station for an extension of their final site plan approval. This is a project that was approved in 2021 under ordinance. Five hundred and forty-five days after final site plan approval to start construction, or the final site plan expires. It happens that deadline is in mid-August. The Sam's Club folks have been struggling with getting some easements in an agreement with the adjacent property owner that they finally did get, but the timing of construction is such that they were concerned that they might expire the plan before they can start construction, and so this request was granted to give them additional time, about two years, to pursue that. But the same, that project is intended to move forward. They're expecting that construction to start in August, has been at this point. That's what the company has said, so. They also had the Parks and Recreation Master Plan update on their agenda. They introduced some information on some proposed possible park locations, but not a lot of discussion because of the time at that point. That was the extent of the planning commission. It's a busy agenda. The EDA board also met yesterday. They had two items on their agenda. One was a proposal to purchase the lot at 2120 Yat Street. This is a residential lot off of Betty Lane, which is off of East River Road. It's part of the East DDA District. It's a property that you have seen in your reports, months and months and months of ordinance enforcement. The owner passed away in January. Property fell into tax foreclosure. The house is derelict, the lot is junked in the backyard. And so the proposal to the East DDA District to purchase this to help stabilize the neighborhood, clean up the site, demolish a building, and prepare the lot to be redeveloped. After significant amount of discussion, they did decide to make that purchase. So we'll be moving forward, working with the county treasurer's office on that. The second item on the list was a proposal to provide some funding support for the new courtesy vehicle, a crew car, that's at the Mount Pleasant Airport. This comes out, my role as the township representative on our airport joint operations and management board. This board, of course, part of its role is to try to help grow the airport, grow corporate traffic, expand opportunities to district to the airport, and create new revenue streams, basically to make the best use of this regional resource that we have. And one of the early items that came up was that most general aviation airports have a crew car or courtesy vehicle that's available for flight crews that are on layover, just as many crews do. They fly in Santana, or Chris Rock, or whoever, for the casino, or they fly in corporate folks. And they're typically waiting at the airport for potentially hours at a time. And they want to be able to come into town, get dinner, movie, or the bank, whatever they need to do. And right now, they would have to rent a car to do that, or they would have to basically catch a ride or something. So that was recognized, that was an amenity that's very important to this type of airport. And of course, it has a direct benefit on our business community, because these are folks that have disposability coming, want to spend it. And so the opportunity came up to bring a crew car into operation. Took some time to find one, but we did find one eventually that the city made available to the police crowd. So at this point, then it was, how do we build a fund to make sure this vehicle is maintained and operated? And also the idea of ultimately putting vinyl wrap on the vehicle that would have the EMD logo and perhaps logos for various sponsoring agencies, so this vehicle becomes very obvious in the community. The airport, first of all, the city is paying for insurance. They, of course, provided the vehicle. They also provided some of the minor repairs to the air conditioner that needed before it can be put into use. Vehicle itself is in beautiful condition. The black and white is an old place cruiser. So basically looking for a fund that private companies have stepped up. At this point, the private companies have provided $2,500 worth of donations to this vehicle. It's already in use now, it's just, it's just already in use, and it's already proved very attractive and very popular. So with all that in mind, we proposed to the EDA that we provide some funding to support this vehicle since many of the businesses that these flight crews will be visiting are east and west DDA districts. The EDA board was very excited about that idea, and they did approve it, provided some funding for that. So that was the other item on their agenda, also a pretty busy meeting for them. And with that, there was no sidewalk activity, no sidewalk media activities, so that I'm happy to answer any questions.
I'm glad we know what's going on with the Sam's Club project. It was kind of a mystery before.
For a long time, it was stuck in neutral, but.
Does the city wanna have sponsors for that vehicle, or just the governmental sponsors?
Well, the idea is those that wish to, that have put money into it, could put their logo or their name on this vinyl wrap. At this point, that is an idea. It hasn't yet gotten to, to actually looking for vendors to provide that service. But that is the idea behind it. The idea also is to put together in colors that were easily visible. Like I said, use that logo, the EMD logo, so just to give it a high visibility.
Oh, yeah. Who handles that for the city?
The vehicle? It's managed by the airport manager.
The airport manager. Okay. All right, cool.
And we will, eventually, we will have data available on it, so they're going to be putting a GPS on it that would allow the airport to track where it goes, so that they can share that information with folks like us to find out where the people are visiting.
Well, just as a business owner in the area, I haven't heard about it. I didn't hear about any opportunity to donate or anything like that. So I just didn't know how that, you know, how that got out, or anything like that.
Yeah, this is pretty new all around. The vehicle wouldn't have been serviced just a few weeks ago.
It's awesome.
At this point, basically, if somebody was interested in donating, it would be very easy to do it with the airport.
I would add, maybe you said it and I just missed it this time. You did mention that the city donated one of their old police cars that they had retired, but also they're picking up the insurance on it. Because I was concerned about the long-term cost. You did mention that this time? Okay, my apologies. I just missed it. I will note that, and this is not a formal request by any means by the EDA, but there was, maybe the board would like to kick in on that, too. So I'm just gonna put that out there, and if this board would like to entertain that, we can have that discussion another time. But I will float the idea.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have one, I'm sorry, just checking my notes. Parks plan. What I remember was that you're working on it and you had hired someone, correct, to help you with some of that?
Right. We brought in mechanical associates, we have an existing relationship with them, to work on the survey. We have not put the survey out. Unfortunately, we've got, point of view, summer, we had, all of our student housing is empty at the moment, and so it felt best to delay the survey a little bit, so we have good response.
Okay, well, that kind of leads me to my next question, and forgive me if I forget, but I didn't know what the plan or goal was for ultimately the public hearings for approval timeline?
We're certainly aiming to try to do that this year, before the end of the year, but I would say at this point, it is going to be until fall, so.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question. Regarding the survey, it's gonna be sent out to the residents?
The idea was to send it out as a paper survey and have a follow-up postcard. That was, so those, the paper survey would have also a QR code. If someone wanted to do it electronically, they could use a QR code or a quick link, and postcard would be the same thing, just a reminder to do it. We talked about just having it online. The challenge is you don't know who's responding.
Yeah.
So the mail survey at least gives us some control over who the responses are coming from.
I just wanna throw something out there, because, I mean, with the survey already going out, and it's not done yet, right?
It hasn't gone out yet, no.
Oh, but it's printed?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, I was just saying, you know, a lot of the townships surveyed their residents to find out what they wanted to do with ARPA funds. And I just thought maybe we could throw an ARPA question on there. I just float, I just float in that idea, because, I mean, a lot of townships did that in the area, so.
So I will say this, the questions, the questions are all Parks and Recreation related.
Yep.
And they do get at, I think, a lot of what you're thinking about, at least in terms of Parks and Recreation, because most of the questions are either about what do you enjoy, what are you using in terms of our existing facilities, or what among these various options, and there's several different questions that cover this ground in different ways, what would you like to see that's not here? And there's even, they're still in, there's multiple choice, so I think we get a lot of information about what the folks are interested in from that, even without a direct question about the ARPA funds.
Awesome.
We all good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Board member reports. Trustee Brown.
Monday, June 13th, Mount Pleasant City Commission meeting, just a few simple things. We, they did swear in police officer David Wheaton, and they made Mason Nash before that, but I saw David Wheaton. I didn't see Mason Nash. He was on here, so he may have went through the hoop, but I witnessed David Wheaton being sworn in. Also proclamation on recognition on Juneteenth, Celebration Day of June 19th, 2022. That was awesome. Proclamation also recognized on LGBTQ Pride Month, June. That was also awesome. There was a few, Jim McBride, Middle Michigan Development Corporation, he has a presentation also. There's a lot of information, so the YouTube, the date, city commission, you can watch the whole thing. One other thing, the city attorney, Mike, I'm trying to get his last name right, Homier, Homier? He talked on the charter amendment related to the city commission terms. As far as the voting for city commissioners moving from odd to even ears, there's a lot of information there. And it sounds like the Attorney General has already approved the preliminary plan of that. So we may see some changes there, how that's, how the voting's gonna go for the city commissioners moving all the way for the next several years anyways, as they straighten it out to get them from those odd to even ears where they're switching. So that's all I have on that one.
So regarding the, you said two police officers were sworn in that night? Is one of those, by chance, the mental health patrol officer?
I couldn't answer that for sure. I'm not sure. I have a Mason Nash and a David Wheaton. I watched David Wheaton, but I'm not sure on a Mason Nash if that is the case.
That mental health officer was probably there in February or March, because we painted her office, and then she moved in the next day, and that was late February or March. Kristen, isn't that her name?
I don't know.
I think her name's Kristen.
I thought the mayor told me not too long ago they hadn't hired anybody yet, but that.
She, that was, I'm pretty sure her name was Kristen, cuz, I mean, I'm not her.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, thanks, Bill.
Trustee Bills?
Yes, sir. I attended the Isabella County Board of Commissioners meeting last evening, and they had a long presentation on their MERS stuff. It was like 40 pages long, talking about how their liability will decrease as, because things were locked out and everything. They changed the plans. Other than that, they're getting their second disbursement of ARPA, and they're also going to be getting their opioid settlement very soon. They know that, they already asked for their bank number, so they know that they're gonna be getting it very soon, so that's exciting. The budget first draft for 2023 came in, $4.6 million deficit. So they're a little short for next year. There's a tire pickup on Saturday at the fairgrounds. I didn't know if everybody was aware of that. And it's until noon or until the truck is full, so they said to make sure you get there soon, like, early. And then the materials recycling facility feasibility study is going to begin next week. So that's getting started right off the bat. They're gonna be doing, they approved, and they're going to be doing AV upgrades to the board commissioner's room at the courthouse. And also upstairs, there's gonna be renovations so that they can have overflow people that are waiting to speak, or maybe Zoom speak from their speakers and whatnot. They did approve all of their five bargaining unions the June 19th holiday, Juneteenth. So other than that, that's about it, guys.
Thank you. Trustee slash Planning Commissioner Thering?
Yes, sir, thank you. I recommend, if you have an opportunity, because parks are something that we've discussed, to go to the meeting packet for the planning commission for yesterday. At the very end, there's a Park and Recreation Master Plan Update. Rodney talked about that. It's actually very, very nice. It's got a little bit of information. It shows all the, some maps where it shows parks, county, city, township. It also talks and shows areas where there are potential parks. And one of those is the area that we had talked about, where trustee Houck had kind of had mentioned, we had a brief discussion. That's one of a few areas that could be a potential park, so take a few minutes. I recommend you look that over. It's just, it's very, very well done. Thank you, Rodney, and.
Thank you much. Treasurer Rice?
First, I wanna start and say sorry I was late for the meeting. Some family issues came up that needed me right away, so I didn't get out the door on time, so sorry about that. And as for me, the only thing is taxes are going out in the mail for July 1st. We're on schedule as of right now, so. Yeah, that's it for me.
Thank you. You're everyone's favorite person with the taxes.
I know. I know. I get the most exciting news.
Trustee Houck?
Well, it's a road commission meeting on June 9th. They approved a contract for part of the, part of Mission Road that's gonna get redone. We had gotten approved last year, but they have to approve contracts with the townships and MDOT, just so work can get going. So that was about six miles of that project. Then they'll go from Stevenson Lake Road through to Claire. They talked about their, you know, the big talk lately is about fuel budgets. They're not worried about their fuel budget. They said for the last few years, they've overestimated how much they would use. One of the major discussions, and we all saw it on TV, was Vernon Road, where the overpass got hit. Vernon Road was 14 feet, 5 inches. It's currently 15 feet, 4 inches. It got hit, or 9 inches it got taken out. And they said that they would be surprised if that road opens back up this year, because everybody is so busy. They don't know if they're gonna be able to, you know, get somebody to fix it this year. They take different quadrants of the county and strike roads and stuff, so the east part of the county's gonna get done this year. Can't even read my own writing on that one. They're close to a settlement, too, with Apex. Apex was the wind energy project. And there's roads all like in Nadavah Township and Isabella Township that are in bad shape. There's cupping in the roads from heavy truck use, so. Oh, I know what the other one was. The bid openings for Lincoln Road will be June 27th. Then MDOT will decide who's gonna do it. Then on the 15th, I went to the Council of Governments meeting. They had Register of Deeds night. Karen Jackson, Register of Deeds, came in and talked. of deeds night, Karen Jackson, the register of deeds, came in and talked, talked about, they're being, it's kind of weird, I didn't know that, when you register a deed, there's twenty-two steps to it. And so I went home that night, and I thought, well, I'm going to look my note, and there were twenty-three pages of deeds just for the last name Houck. And I thought, how can there be that many? And then I looked on my name, and there's so, you know, it's just weird that there's very good record keeping. And then they talked about how they do passports there, too. I never, I didn't know the reg, maybe I'm ignorant, but I didn't know that the register of deeds in the county did passports. I always thought you went to the post office.
Nope.
That's where I've done it, it's at the post office, I've never gone to the register of deeds.
We did our register of deeds, so...
Oh, she was talking about how that gets pretty tricky at times, too. There was like some nineteen-year-old kid that came in and said this seventeen-year-old girl was his daughter, and, you know, a little bit of law enforcement got involved, but... Then towards the end of that meeting, we were talking, you know, they talked about the elections coming up and everything, so I just asked the question, how much election workers get, and the average from the townships was thirteen to fifteen an hour. And they were talking how there's many townships that are having problems getting enough election workers, I know like Co-Township, she said she didn't have enough, and there were other townships that were going to step up and say, hey, you can go work over at Co-Township. So it's a pretty good meeting, it was a long meeting, but pretty interesting with all that register of deeds stuff. All right, that's it.
Thank you. Cody?
Okay, some election updates. Everybody's going to be receiving a new ID card, this will have the county commissioner, district changes on it, or if you're part of the precinct two that got moved over into three, that small area, you'll also get a card. We mailed out about two thousand AV applications, that's the permanent list, and so far we got back four hundred and seventeen, and we mailed out four hundred and seventeen ballots. And our public accuracy testing for the August election is scheduled for July seventh at two thirty PM. Anybody from the public can come watch, run ballots through, check out the machines.
Very good. Thank you. I don't have much to say, because Mr. Nanny did such a great job, so thank you for that. So that moves us to item ten on our agenda. I'm happy to entertain any motions regarding consent agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve consent agenda.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Bills. You know, I didn't look at the list who had warrants.
I did. At best of my ability, I see no issue.
Any discussion on consent agenda? See none, all in favor of approving the consent agenda? Say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Consent agenda passes unanimously. That brings us to our first new business item, eleven A, discussion township sidewalk project service agreement. Mr. Stooldryer, would you like to introduce this?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. The paperwork for this begins on page eighteen of your agenda packet, and we're asking the board to consider an agreement with Gordy Frazier, Inc. in an amount not to exceed twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to provide civil engineering, construction, administration services as it relates to sidewalk construction around Township Hall up here from Lux North to Pickard, and then into McDonald Park, and then also a sidewalk through the township-owned lot at fifty-two, forty-three Jonathan Lane, which would at least provide at least pedestrian access between the two neighborhoods and authorize the manager to sign that agreement. The, this agreement is being brought to you under the cover of what I refer to as the master agreement that we have with Gordy Frazier, that sets out the way the two entities, the two parties are going to operate. It allows for these project-specific type of arrangements with board approval, and then they also have to then, to the extent it's an hourly work, every year Gordy Frazier provides us with their hourly rates for their different types of, whether it's a senior engineer, less senior engineer, administrative staff. So all, all of that is embedded in this agreement. The scope of work includes engineering, design, bidding and permitting assistance, construction, bid assistance, bid, generating big doc, bid documents when bids come in, assisting with a review of those bids, and then construction administration as well. The amount of sidewalk under this agreement is a little over a thousand linear feet that would be being built, and it is hoped that if, if this is approved, and that their work will put us on a path that with a little bit of luck, we'll have the construction done yet in twenty twenty-two. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Trustee Bills?
I just want to make the motion whenever you're ready.
Okay, I have a question, so let me ask that to the manager. You'd mentioned hourly rate, and the only thing I wasn't sure of in here, it mentions twenty-eight thousand, five hundred, I think is the amount?
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed?
Mm-hmm.
Is that not to exceed saying the board's not approving more than that, which if motion were made, I'm assuming that would be the amount? Or they agreed to a not to exceed in this case, even though they have hourly rates?
Your approving and not to exceed amount, twenty-eight thousand, eight hundred and fifty.
Two hundred and fifty, yeah, two fifty.
Two hundred and fifty.
Gordy Frazier didn't lay that down, that offer, they didn't say, well, we'll charge you hourly but not exceeding this amount, right?
I think she does say that.
It does? Okay, I just wasn't sure. It does say that? Okay. And I do that kind of work sometimes, too, but it's not typical always for people to charge hourly to put a not to exceed on, so I would expect in that case that it might be less.
Yes.
I ask my question.
I move to approve the agreement with Gordy Frazier, Inc. in the amount not to exceed two, twenty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to provide civil engineering and construction administration services for sidewalk construction around the northern and eastern perimeter of the Township Hall and west into McDonald Park, and through the township-owned lot at fifty-two, forty-three Jonathan Lane, to provide a pedestrian connection between Jonathan Lane and East K Street, and to authorize the township manager to sign the agreement.
Support.
Motion by Bills, support by Rice. I'll just comment briefly on EDA discussion last night. Last night I shared with the EDA that the parking lot was going to be done, and with that, the parking lot is moving further to the west to allow room for sidewalk when that happens, and a comment that was made by the EDA member was, well, should the township basically lead by example, that's not the words, I'm paraphrasing, but lead by example and put in some sidewalks there then? And I said, well, it's not our agenda tonight, we'll see what happens. Like I said, I don't want to get ahead of the board here, but we're definitely having that discussion, so this is exciting to me. I mean, the Jonathan Lane thing is cool, too, because of what it does to connect those two neighborhoods, but the fact that we've made sidewalks, more walkability and, you know, in our township, a priority for us to make this on our own property is important, so I'm excited about this.
I totally agree with that. That's a hundred percent what we need in this township, so that people can remain healthy and ambulatory.
I think the perfect, I think the, the perfect trustee made, made this motion for this. Thank you for making that motion, Connie.
Yes, sir, thank you.
She was excited, I could tell.
Yeah, we've been begging for this.
Take care of those feet now.
Yes, sir.
And I've, I've been looking forward to this one, you know, I've been trying to push this for a while, so I'm, I'm excited to, to see it come, so...
I have a couple of questions.
Trustee Houck?
After this, after we do this, when they go through the bidding process, is there a possibility that our own crew could do the sidewalk in front of the Township Hall? I mean, we've got people that work for the, we don't have a streets department, but we have people that work there that are totally capable of pouring this concrete, I mean, I'm not going to name their names, but I know they were masons. I just wondered if we could bid on it ourselves? If, I know like, it sounds weird, but I know when I bid on jobs at CMU, I'll be bidding it, and maybe CMU's paint department will bid it, too, even though the work is at CMU. So I just wondered if, I know the hardest thing to get right now in construction is excavators, so I know we have the equipment, we have, you know, I'm just wondering if maybe we could do it ourselves, if we have time.
Well, I think your last comment is probably the key, you know, we, we have staff that is probably capable, as you indicate. Things I'm not sure about sitting here right now is whether or not we have the production capacity to do it, because, you know, we got a whole list of other work we're doing. And then, you know, you, you mentioned the piece just in front of the Township Hall, and then that starts, you know, chopping up the work a little bit, that might make it a little bit more difficult and, and confusing. And then, although it might be a little bit more of a minor point, I'd want to look at their job descriptions as well.
Yeah.
Because, you know, there is this thing that, of having them do work that's outside of their job description.
I, I understand.
Yeah, right. But you're right, I've, I've seen similar activity, particularly in the printing area, I've worked for some places that had a print shop, and they might bid on the job that was also being bid outside.
Yeah.
Appreciate the comment.
Yeah.
The other question I have is over on Jonathan Lane, if that foundation hasn't been cleaned up over there yet, is there any possibility, if this gets engineered before that, while they're there, if they could do the work while they're there with their equipment?
That, that, the project's all done.
Oh. I haven't been by there in the last...
That, that took a contractor, will certainly receive an invitation to bid.
Well, I, I was just thinking, while, you know, if it hasn't been cleaned up yet, if they were there, it'd be, you know, a way to save some money.
Incidentally, Mr. Nanny reported on that project on Jonathan last night, and correct me if I heard you wrong, but my understanding is the excavation of that foundation in, in the house ended up being a lot less costly than we had budgeted for.
That is correct. In fact, it's in your report here, project funding.
But I wanted to lift that up, so...
Thank you.
Further questions, comments?
Well, I mean, I have one comment, and I don't mean to try to disagree with you, Bill, but, you know, when you put in a bid out there, it should also be big enough so that a company wants to bid on it, and, you know, this project's not humongous, you know, so I mean...
It's a big job.
You think it's a big job?
It's a good-sized job, yeah.
Thousand feet of sidewalk once we get around a bit of construction work.
I mean, it's going to be six figures.
Yeah, I see that in the report, but it's not, I mean, still, it's just a, I mean, you're going to bid that to two or three com, us and another company, you know, split it up, or?
No, I mean, it'll be open to the public, and then, you know, I mean, anybody will be...
Right, but I don't think, you know, if we have employees that are already full-time and they're doing other things, I don't see how they would have time to do the whole project.
Things happen that way, Connie, I mean...
You think so?
They, yeah, I mean, I live it every day, Jeff, you know that.
I appreciate your idea.
Yeah, but whatever, you know, if it doesn't, I mean, I don't know, I just didn't know if that would work or not.
I think it's smart that we look at every idea, outside the box, inside the box, Bill, I really do. Yep, so we'll, we'll, we definitely all look at it, and we're all listening.
Obviously, it's on your shoulders whether or not that's feasible or a good idea for a particular project.
Well, if it's not a good idea, I mean, Hill got us, no, whatever.
All right, so I'm sensing no other debate or questions at this point, so we have a motion to approve the contract with Gordy Frazier for twenty-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. All in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. That brings us up to our last five new business items, all having to do with policy governance. Item eleven B regarding two point five, point ten cash flow ratio. With that, Mr. Stooldryer, you have the floor.
Thank you, and you'll find the report beginning on page twenty-six of your agenda packet. This is one of the few times in our reviews where, where the, the policy, annual policy review is on a specific sub-policy. And this one happens to be two point five, point ten, which is cash flow adequacy, and I can see why this one would be kind of pulled out and reviewed specifically, because cash flow is an important component of trying to manage finances for, for any organization. You can have a very strong balance sheet and have very low cash, and you've got to figure that out. But the policy wording itself says that the township shall not fail to maintain an adequate level of cash flow. I interpret that to be that, that we need to have cash available for the major funds, which is the general fund, the fire fund, the east and west DDA fund, and the sewer and water fund, and that they should not fall below thresholds that are at, at a minimum defined in Governance Policy two point four, point three. And then there's some other considerations that, that we take into account. The two point five point, two point, four point three says that the general fund needs to maintain four months worth of cash, four months of budgeted, cash worth four months of budgeted expenditures, that we need to have that cash on hand. And for the fire fund, it's a little less than that, we have three quarterly payments, or we have four quarterly payments, three of which are due before our tax revenue comes in. And the east and west DDA funds, that we should have, the interpretation is two months of cash flow to meet their needs, they don't have large operational needs, salaries and that kind of thing, but we do have annual contracts and other annual expenditures that come up throughout the year, and that the water and sewer fund, because of the way we bill this, bill our users, should have two months of budgeted expenses worth of cash on hand. And so I've kind of began, begun to speak about the justification for this interpretation. First, I want to make sure you understand what cash flow is, or what cash is from our perspective, and it's liquid cash reserves held by the bank, or in our case of the EDA, the credit union, that is accessible fairly quickly to be used on an as-needed basis. Physical cash, certificates of deposit are considered cash for this purposes, because they can be cashed in pretty quickly. As it relates to the general fund... As it relates to the, uh, general fund, we don't have an even, our revenue does not come e- come in evenly throughout the year. We basically have two or three big ti- big times of revenue during the year, and yet our expenses are occurring throughout the year. So that, that's how I, uh, interpret our need for cash. We have data that's on page twenty seven of your report, where for each of these funds, we list the current cash on hand at the end of the quarter, the amount required to be in compliance. And for all these funds, for instance, the general fund has about five point nine million dollars of cash as we define it, and the amount required to have on hand is eight hundred ninety two thousand dollars. So we're, we're well over our minimum requirements. And that will be true, uh, throughout each of these funds, if you look at page, uh, twenty seven. So from that perspective, the reason we need the cash and how it's been defined as to the levels that we need, we're in compliance with the policy. Be happy to answer any questions they may have.
I'm glad you brought up CDs, 'cause that was gonna be my question, 'cause, only 'cause we have re- reviewed the east and west DDA's last night, so I was fairly familiar with the numbers in front of me, and I knew that included CDs, so I wanted to ask it so that the board heard it, but you brought that up. So, unassigned though, um, you know, if I look in the west, how are you doing unassigned versus, if I just pick on the west DDA, unassigned versus just W DDA?
What this is saying is that the west DDA has current cash of a million four, and at least as it pertains to the west DDA, 'cause first it can't be used outside of the district, that there are no assignments of that that have been made using the definition of assigned and unassigned fund balance that the auditors use.
Okay, 'cause I'm, as I was thinking about the west, Lincoln Project, for example, you know, and some of that is earmarked for that, but that would not be called assigned based on that definition then?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
Would you mind taking a stab at defining that? Or is that not the easiest thing to do?
I would be hesitant to do that right now. I, I can get that back to you and.
Yeah, just so I understand that better, that would be great.
I'd like to see that too.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Then I'll ask one of the board. There's not a form here for us to review, but I wanna ask if you feel like we're in compliance, based on the information.
Yes.
Yes, I do.
Any issues with the interpretation?
No.
Very good. Uh, moving on then, um, eleven C, Policy Governance two point seven, End Focus of Grants and Contracts. Uh, this is actually, uh, about a month late. It's, it's not late, right? It's on our calendar this way, but, uh, Mr. Stuldryer, you have the floor, if you'd like to present this.
Thank you, and this, uh, policy review begins on page twenty eight of your agenda packet. The wording of the policy is that the township manager may not enter into any, any grants or contractual arrangements that fail to emphasize primarily the production of ends, and secondarily, the avoidance of acceptable means. So what that kinda says is that contracts we enter into and grants we apply for and receive need to be geared towards the accomplishment of our ends. And that we also want to avoid engaging in unacceptable means, which is a whole section of your governance policy too. So we may on occasion enter into contracts to help avoid doing that, and an example of that is an auditor contract. And then further in the policy, without, uh, any limitations to the foregoing, the manager shall not submit a Saginaw-Chippewa Indian Tribe two percent grant application without prior approval by the Board of Trustees. That was added, uh, two or, wait, not two, probably three or four years ago at this point. So I interpret that policy, and I began to speak to it, all grant applications, contractual arrangements. We, we need to keep the goal of executing our ends in minds when, when, when we're, when we're doing, doing this, entering into these arrangements. And that that's a reasonable interpretation, because I think the policy itself is, is well-written and it's self-explanatory. There's a, uh, quite a bit of data that begins on page twenty eight of your agenda packet. I'll just touch on a couple of those. Some of the arrangements we re- enter into are participation agreements with the road commission for the road work that we do in the township. We have applied and received fire protection reimbursement grants from the state of Michigan that we're entitled to, because we have some state-owned buildings within the township, so we qualify for that program. And we, uh, annually apply for and, and have been receiving those grants. Similarly, the state has a program where the folks like the EDA and the west DDA, if applicable, they are at, at risk of losing a certain amount of revenue due to personal property tax law changes. There's a program in place where we can be reimbursed for those if we go through the, uh, exercise of application, which we do, and, and we end up, uh, last year received fifty six thousand dollars on behalf of the EDA as a result of lost personal property taxes. The EDA itself enters into many, uh, contractual arrangements. They don't have staff that, uh, can do a lot of their work. So whether it's a holiday lighting arrangement, we have contracts for that. Curb lawn, sidewalk, uh, snow plowing contracts for that. And I argue that EDA is, is instrumental in the accomplishment of many of the ends throughout, uh, your policy document, to by extension. Those are, uh, working towards the, the accomplishment and the furthering of your ends. In twenty one, we did apply for, and the board was aware of this prior to the application, of, uh, we were awarded thirty eight thousand dollars in twenty twenty one to assist with the, uh, chip seal program for the roads in the, in the township. So then some others that I have not mentioned, but, um, based on the wording of the policy, the interpretation, justification, and the data, the administration suggests that we're in compliance with that policy.
Questions, comments for our manager? Interpretation is always an important one, to make sure that we agree that the interpretation is reasonable and what we intend. Any feedback on that?
Excuse me?
Likewise.
Mm-hmm, I think the review's excellent.
And then the data provided regarding the interpretation, um, reasonable?
Yes.
Very much.
Do you feel that the entire policy is being addressed by our manager in this report?
Yes.
I do.
And I think we're good. Thank you for that. Off note briefly, um, I guess I either didn't know or didn't remember that, uh, the state reimburses us for fire protection. That's interesting. How is that calculated, based on their property values or?
Yeah, so there, there's a, the, the application work is done by the finance department, which also includes the assessing area. So the assessor and the finance director work together, and it's, it's trying to establish, 'cause you gotta remember the state property isn't assessed to begin with, but, um, we do carry some, I'll call it memo data on those parcels. And, um, then there's a formula within, uh,
Do that.
the application.
That's nice to see. So item, uh, now comes to the board. Eleven D, uh, Policy Governance three point five, uh, Board Commission and Community Linkage. I'm assuming everyone's read through this. So I'll just get to the point, and this is dealing with, I looked at three of them, so forgive me. Linkage, not just with the community as a whole, but with our various boards, right, board linkage. So, um, do you feel the board is in strict compliance with the policy as stated?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, I'm, I'm gonna say no. And the reason I say no is because of three point five point one, which is on thirty, page thirty one of the packet. Three point five point one says to keep the board fully informed, uh, Planning Commission's owning board of appeals, Citizens Task Force on Sustainability, Hannah's Bark Park Advisory Board, Chippewa River, dip blah blah, and so on. Will be invited to give an annual report to the board. We don't really invite all of these parties, and so I wanted to lift up that, that's fairly intentional. You know, the, the boards that interact directly with our domain, closer to home, such as Planning Commission, the EDA, they're all invited. But, um, not that Hannah's Bark Park is not important, but, um, are representatives of that, that they fairly work autonomously from us. Same with, um, the, the District Library, um, Mid-Michigan, uh, I thought I saw, yeah, Mid-Michigan Development Corporation. I actually put a call on to Jim McBride, um, I haven't heard back from him yet, to think that it might be helpful for him to be invited. But I wanted to lift up that I didn't think we were in compliance, only because we don't really invite all of these parties. And maybe, based on the sense that I've gotten so far, I may be wrong, um, they shouldn't all be listed here. Because I think we're in compliance with the concept of.
Well, Jim.
What I'm suggesting is potentially striking some of these entities from that annual, uh, meeting.
I agree.
Like the, uh, library for sure.
Library.
And the Hannah's Bark Park, that, I think when we had our joint meeting, that was addressed by planning?
I'm not sure.
I don't know that it was addressed.
I mean, not addressed, but I mean, they, they talked about.
Correct.
They are represented, even though I am part of the Board of Trustees, I'm also in, I'm the Planning Commission, so therefore, I am invited to make comments every meeting. So, uh, therefore, I, I agree, maybe not all of them are rep- represented, but I would say the bulk of them are represented by somebody that attends. Now, not attends these meetings, not that everything is mentioned every meeting, but the opportunity for discussion is always there.
Yeah, but this is in regards to the annual report. It's in this, it lists all these and says we'll be invited to give an annual report to the board, and we typically, unless I, unless I'm misremembering, I don't think we've given those formal invites.
Well, but Jim came. He came and gave us an annual report.
Not, not to.
By an annual report.
We went, that's the meeting that the, like, that we did at the Commission on Aging.
Yeah.
And I guess I assumed that we had invited them and they just didn't come, so that's my mistake there for, for that, is not realizing that they weren't gonna be on the invite list.
By chance?
What, what's the question?
Uh, the, the question is, do you know if all of these parties were invited to that annual meeting?
No.
Okay.
And.
Then that's my mistake for not knowing that.
Yeah, please.
Okay.
I, I've looked at this since I've been here, and it's, you know, for what it's worth, 'cause it's your review of your policy. I would recommend, for different reasons, that the sidewalk committee be removed from this language, because they're actually a committee of the Planning Commission, okay? Uh, the sustainability committee be removed, because that's defunct. The Bark Park be removed, because I don't wanna say it's not germane, but I don't think it reaches the intent of what this policy is trying to do. You do have representation on that, which is me. I probably could speak to the Bark Park once in a while, but I usually don't. We just had a meeting last Monday. But you're talking about two things. One, hosting these groups. So if you've invited them all and they happened all, and you have to plan for a certain level of attendance, you need a room to fit a hundred people. And where are you gonna find that? You know, you'd have to get it from CMU somewhere. And so you'd plan for that kinda level, then you'd end up in a big room with just a handful of people. That doesn't look good either. The other part is the annual report where you're receiving information from them. So, I, the library for the same reason. Cable Consortium, the CRC. So I see six entities that I would probably remove from this policy. And then you don't have to get into the business of, at, at a technical level, I'll say, compliance or not, technical compliance. 'Cause I think you're pretty much in compliance with what your, your main thrust is. If your intent really is to intergate, in, in, interact with these entities that I just listed, then I think we need to rethink how that is gonna occur and what that looks like and all of that. So that's my two cents.
Yeah, I, I think as I looked at the annual meeting, um, it has a certain purpose, and that is really linkage with our servant boards that are active in our close domain, right? And I didn't see the, some of these other entities, even though there's that representation, there's that, there is a linkage there, that we're trying to share our ends with Hannah's Bark Park Committee, right? And they have a particular charge that is important, but it's not what we oversee, really. So I really thought it'd be nice to clean this off, and I had, I don't know that I had six, but I, I had kinda figured we probably should take out quite a few of these.
I agree.
Oh.
Do you need a motion?
Clerk Cody.
I agree with Mark to take out the six that he mentioned.
I do too.
You, uh.
Or the subcommittees.
You did not mention, mention mid, correct?
Uh, he did.
Mid-Michigan.
Yes.
Yes, he did.
Cable Consortium, yep.
No, I'm sorry, Mid-Michigan Development Corporation. My apologies. 'Cause I struggled with that one, 'cause I think it could be a useful linkage.
I would take it out. He came to us for that.
I'm sorry?
I would take it out. Because he comes and gives more. It'd be too hard for him to.
Yeah. I think you could keep it in three point five point one, but remove Mid-Michigan from the first paragraph.
Oh, I'll put, I'll.
The policy states.
Right. And, and you might wanna make that distinction with the library too. They levy taxes, you have two representatives. You might wanna receive an annual report, and the form of that would be inviting our two reps.
Yeah.
But they usually give an annual report every year too. The library, don't they? That we've had them here.
They, they, they often do.
Yeah.
Uh, we, we don't make it a point to invite them like,
Right.
like we do with Mid.
Yeah.
MMTC.
Right.
But then inviting the library board, you know, is where we're the host. That, that, you're gonna find that awkward and.
Yes, I agree.
Is, is there some consensus on this then?
Yep.
Because there really is two purposes. One is, will we get a chance to all talk together, right? The Planning Commission, the EDA, the Board of Trustees. The other being, being able to hear from our representatives representing these other organizations on our behalf.
Hear.
Hear.
Yeah.
Just giving, asking if they'd be willing to give us a report.
Because that's gonna be a lot different.
So for sake of getting this done then, um.
Did you need a motion?
I, I don't know if we need a motion. Um, I'm okay with informal action. I just want to make sure we're clear. Um, so we would be taking a sustainability, Hannah's Bark Park, District Library.
Consortium.
Cable Consortium. Worth kind of taking between now and the next meeting, just put it all down and then present. I, I don't think it would be a major topic.
And cultural and rec.
I was gonna say, Mark listed them all off.
Yeah, I think we're pretty good.
Um, I mean, they're.
Why drag it up?
Yeah, let's not do it again.
Sidewalks and.
Let me just ask, was there any objection to the list that our manager gave?
No.
Would you be willing to?
Yeah, what, what I was gonna suggest is that I will take a stab at, through the red line and
Perfect.
additions, give you a draft of some reworded, a reworded three point five for you to consider.
Thank you.
I think that's great. Thank you.
I'd like to see that. It just gives you a little bit of time to, I mean, I, I, we're right on. We know what we want to do, but it gives us time to.
Right. Okay, following along those same lines in um, noncompliance, uh, three point five point two, and I think trustee Howke is one that's lifted this up in the past. It has to do with periodically meeting with border municipalities. And I think that's one that we've not done very well. I think we do a good job of communicating with uh, the tribe and the county. But I would say our townships to, to the north, south, east and west is not our strength at this point. And so either, either it's not important to keep in here, um, I guess the, the city would be included in that too, right, as well.
Well, what I see here is I see the county, the city, and the Sagueno-Chippewa Indian Tribe, which would be that luncheon that nobody wants to go to. Okay? And I think, you know, honestly, that's what we need to be doing. Governments talk, that's what they do. And I mean, if we don't talk, then we're not talking. And that's a prob, I think that would be a problem. Uh, I hope, I sure hope that, that in the fall, people find time in their schedule, because this, I think this is about one of the most important things I've seen in the one and a half years I've been here.
They gotta pick a weekend. I, I just, it's.
A weekend?
It's hard for me to go. I mean, I've got enough things that I take work off for that. I mean, I know this is important. I, I don't disagree, but it's that and I, I just, I, I don't necessarily agree with the Camils and I definitely agree with getting together.
Clerk Cody.
We do council of government, governance meetings. I do clerk meetings. As far as that luncheon, I really want to go, but I have to work. I can't get on that.
Well, that's, they're talking about the board here though, not just a board representative.
That's how I interpreted it. And, and I think you're right. I think the point I want to lift up is I interpreted periodically meeting with border municipalities is not just the city, but also the townships. And we've talked about that, and so if that's important to us, we need to understand it that way. Um, and maybe clarify it. And if the townships bordering us are not what's important, it's the city in that case, then we need to define it that way, I think. Because we do have representative for the city, but not for the other townships.
I agree. I think that that's, needs to be done. The other town, we should have a township. We do have the intergovernmental meeting every month.
Yeah, but what I was saying is, we don't, I think we could communicate with Chippewa, Isabella Cole, or not Cole-Lincoln, and maybe not a lot of township.
Well, aren't all those townships invited to that?
Yeah, but I'm just saying.
To what?
The intergovernmental meeting that we have at the top.
Council of Governments.
I'm sorry, Council of Government.
But this is different. This is something that, you know, we brought up that maybe if we communicated with towns, surrounding townships more. I think I brought up last year, one reason is, like when Isabella Township applied for paving Mission Road, that four miles. Well, if we would have worked with them, maybe we could have, you know, nothing that we did wrong or that they did wrong. If we would have maybe worked together, maybe we could have gotten it paved from the roundabout to baseline road, so it would have been completed in our township and their township. And then, you know, who knows, like maybe we could have done work on roads south of here too. Not just roads, but other things too.
Yeah, I think that's when you brought it up last time, when they got the two percent award for that portion of Mission.
Right. And if we would have went to, well, you and I talked about, I think when we, when we saw that that project, when we went over there got our money for the, I don't know what it was the last year, but you, we opened that packet up and we, we said, wow, they're gonna do Mission Road. And it would have been nice to see that done where I think we brought up the fairgrounds, because it would have been nice to have it done from the roundabout to the fairgrounds. You know, and if we would have maybe worked together, knowing that they were applying for that, we didn't even know it, you know?
What I would suggest, let's see if, let me take the temperature of the board on this. I'm okay with the language. I was feeling like we weren't in full compliance because of my interpretation of that, meaning our bordering townships. So if you're okay with the intent here, the way the language is written, we can leave it at that and just say we need to do a better job of that.
Yeah, we're not in compliance at all, at all.
Is that fair? Because I think what I wanted to lift up on that particular piece was we, I didn't feel we were in compliance.
No, I agree.
I'm fine with it, but I'd like to know what our plan of action is to change.
Yeah.
Because it, it won't do any good if we don't actually say, this is how we're going to approach.
Right.
And I'm open to ideas. Um, I mean, some of it is um, staff too. And I know our staff works with like Deerfield when we did Meridian Road. Those kinds of things happen. But I don't think we're fully aware of what's going on in Isabella Township or Lincoln or Deerfield.
Well, just try to invite all the townships to do anything and see how many people would respond. I don't think very many, because you gotta have a draw. You gotta say, we're gonna, this is, you know, we're gonna do this. You gotta have a fun, you gotta have an agenda.
I think this is more for us to go to them, not them come to us.
Yeah, I don't think this, this has to be board to board to make sure we have representation talking with their leadership.
So we have a board meeting with their board.
We have open channels.
Is that allowed on, is that allowed?
Well, yeah.
Just two, two townships and then you're gonna do that with every township?
Well, they have township fire departments that, you know, there's.
So we're gonna have our board meet with their board and then have our board meet with another separate township board and then another separate township board.
If there was a reason to.
Oh.
You know, I mean, if there was something you wanted to work together on, possibly.
How about, how about we move on and we think about this, because I, I just wanted to lift up, I thought we could do better at this. I would love for us to have better ideas on how to better be compliant with this.
I agree with James.
I agree with you.
You may.
That we need to, no plan, there's no plan, so.
I'm gonna be taking a stab at the main paragraph under three point five and three point five point one already. And so what you've all been talking about the last few minutes has been, I think three point five two and three point five three. And if you're okay, so the first thing I'd do with three point five two is change municipalities, that turn to local units of government. That solves that. And then if you're, if you're okay with the bordering local units of government, there's only five, ones inside our borders and four are outside our borders. And I would argue that those are the four that you're primarily interested in, because the further you'll get away, they just look a lot different than we do. And then once you're down to four, and, and I think you need to look at three point five a little bit in conjunction with three point ten. And if you do that, if you're looking at it in, in that light, then you know, I, I think it would be fairly easy to invite, you know, four township boards and union township boards, you know. It, it says, um, will attempt to meet periodically. So, you know, talking about trying to get four townships boards, five including us, together. And you know, you could tack on a half hour to a council of government meeting and nail this one.
Yeah.
You, you're not gonna get all seven from each or all five, which I don't even know what they all have, but right now you're doing nothing, I'd argue. And you probably want, it sounds like you want to do something. And I don't think we need to make it. We're not, we're not building a rocket. So I think I can adjust the language in three point five two. And three point five point three, you've already named a liaison to, if, if you look at three point ten. And I'd argue you don't need a liaison with the four townships around you, to the extent where you're going to their meeting.
Yeah, not with.
No. No.
Yeah, I, I think my point on our four neighboring townships was just to have better communications, channel of communication with them. I think that's the intent here. Not that it necessarily be a formal process even.
It would mainly be, the only thing I could think of is working on roads together, like Deerfield, Meridian Road out here, when we worked with Deerfield. They brought it to us, right? If I remember right. Or what, I don't remember what happened, but we were, you know, it was good working together with them.
Yeah, we, we've done joint applications. I forget the long-term name or.
And that's been triggered historically through staff, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
Because we gotta figure out, we're not gonna pave half a road.
Right.
But I think, I also think, you know, beginning to pay a little bit more attention to your four bordering townships, in the long run, some of those will, you'll probably end up having relationships with almost closely as you do with the city. That, that they are gonna become more complex too and more populated over time.
You never know, you could have a joint fire department.
So are we good with, we would direct our manager to help us with some of this?
Yes, sir. Yes.
Thank you.
Hey Connie, just quick, getting back to the meeting that was supposed to happen on Friday.
Sir.
I did see it. We've been doing some work at the county, at the county building. I saw one of the county commissioners. And he suggested maybe if the meeting was at three o'clock in the afternoon.
Yeah.
Where more people could attend these.
But on a Friday, that doesn't work for very many people. A lot of people in the summer are going out of town. You don't have to be here.
We've had pretty good attendance in the past, every year in the past. We had to put it off for COVID for a couple of years. Uh, not everybody from every board's gonna go, not everybody from every board's expected to go. We just want some representation, that's all. And historically, there's been probably twenty to twenty-five folks. It's very informal. It's just almost an opportunity to kind of lift each other up. It's, no work's getting done other than relationships.
But that's good.
And, you know, yeah, and, you know, bored with seven folks, you know, if you can get three or four to attend, you're, you're good.
Yeah.
I've seen uh, where we've hosted the annual meeting that's talked about in three point five one. And I don't, that, that there might have been one Board of Trustees member there.
Holy cow.
Now, that's the other extreme.
I really enjoyed that meeting too.
That's a good meeting.
And all that left me was, was embarrassment.
Yes.
What am I supposed to do with that?
Holy cow.
So I think if we plan a little bit further ahead, the leadership luncheon in the fall will be fun and good. Chance to break bread with some folks and if, you know, it is, I think it is important. It's a chance to celebrate, it's all. And the ones we really want there are the tribe and CMU.
Yes.
And I will say, one, one I went to, I don't know, seven years ago, was when I opened some relationship with some people that I still have today that are useful today for our township. And I mean, it was, that, that one luncheon I went to was well worth that two hours.
Right.
We tried to do this one too quick. For the, for the type of folks we have at these various tables, you, you need four or five month lead time. Because people's calendars are already full.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, so um, I listed what that felt we weren't in strict compliance, um, gave my reasons why. I didn't, I heard some consensus around that. We're gonna get into some new language. Um, so I think, any other comments on how we can be more full compliance? Okay. So with that, unless there's objections, I'll move on.
Please.
Eleven E, this is when I get to step out of the room, I guess. Um, this is dealing with the supervisor. You know, it's good for me to reread some of this too. Um, so I'm assuming you all have, so I'll ask the question. Do you feel that we're in compliance? And I guess that's largely speaking to, is the supervisor following this policy?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yep. As far as I know.
Um, you know, as I read through it, and I tried to read, tried to read through it critically. Three point six point one point one talks about um, making sure that we as a board, because part of, part of one of my responsibilities is to help provide an environment where we can have debate, right? We can have discussion. And part of that is trying to also keep us out of the weeds at times. And I have a tendency to want us to all have our voices heard. And I'm not saying I'm in violation of this necessarily, but I, I need to be more conscious of when we get off track to bring us back. And so decided that's something I want to work on a little more.
I don't think we've done that much.
No, I don't think it's been bad, but I, I know there are times where we could be more efficient, but.
We're all human sometimes.
Yeah.
We're all human.
But I also enjoy the discussion we all have together too. And I, and I think it's generally healthy and it's generally productive. And then the only other thing that I noticed in here, and again, me reading it on, am I doing these things? Was the very last subsection, the supervisor may delegate this authority but remains accountable to its use. I think, um, I think I've missed two, two meetings, my daughter's wedding and then COVID related. And uh, I think, maybe three, because you chaired twice and I think the clerk chaired once. I hope that transition went okay, that you were prepared and ready to run the meeting. I'm asking the two that chaired it.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Because I'm responsible for what you do here, it says, so.
It helps. We've had several meetings under our belt too, I think, though.
Right. Do you think we could improve the process that's laid out in front of us here? Any issues with what's stated?
It's running smooth.
I don't, I don't think, yes. Running good. I, I like it. I think you represent us.
I try to. All right, unless there's objection, then we'll move on. And we'll go after our, our clerk and treasurer.
Yeah.
Uh, so that moves us to item eleven. So that moves us to item eleven F on our agenda, duties of the elected department heads, of which there are two of us here, and that'd be our clerk and treasurer. I'm assuming, again, that each of you have read through this. Do you believe that we're in strict compliance?
Yes.
Yeah.
I do as well. Anybody object to that? Let me, I'm just curious from the clerk and then.
Honestly, I mean, I'm going to like tweak this a little bit and then send it back to you guys, because some of this stuff is way outdated, as far as duties and things like that.
Your duties have changed big time.
Mine have changed, some things are different, I don't know what the treasurers are, but a lot of this stuff is different than what's on here. But I mean, I just, I'll send it to you, you guys can read over it and see what I'm talking about.
Is, is some of that related to the fact that it's delegated out from you?
I mean, one thing is, but there's more responsibilities than is in this thing, like.
That should be listed.
That should be on there, because if somebody comes in, they're not going to know it's one of their duties, or there's quite a few on here that.
Do you have similar comments at all?
No, mine, a lot of mine are very similar. The, the one thing I need to be, I mean, I, I talk with Mark, but I need to be better about talking more frequently with Mark, I think. I, I talk with.
As an employee?
Yes.
Or director?
Right. You know, three point seven point two point three, the township treasurer will cooperate with the township manager with respect to administrative policies and procedures. So just, you know, touching base more frequently. I, I talk to, you know, the, the finance department multiple times a week, but, you know, it just, my talking with the manager doesn't happen as frequently, so I need to work on that, I think.
Well, I look forward to.
I gotta work with everybody here. You know, we talked to Mark, you know, Tara.
Since 2018, with some of the ballot initiatives that passed, that really changed your job tremendously.
Yes.
Yes.
I think it would depend on how much detail you want to get into.
I'm not going to detail it, I'm just going to kind of. Road registration, election administration.
Everything statutory comes under that.
Yeah. I think that covers it.
The more detailed you are, the more we can grade you on it. I'm teasing.
And I did double check, because I saw in three point seven point two point one, it says carry our all statutory duties, and it's out, but I double checked the policy governance, and it's correct in that, so.
Really? Because I had taken the same, I had taken the same note.
Yeah, um, let me double check, it's right here, but, three point.
It should be seven different.
Three point seven point two point one, yeah, carry out all, so it's correct in the policy governance.
Oh, okay.
So, um, I kind of scratched that from my, my list, but I just, I saw that and I was like, ooh.
Anything else on this issue? Without objection, we'll move to item twelve on our agenda, extended public comment. By the way, I do appreciate the discussion we just had on our policy governance. Extended public comment is limited to any issue, or I guess it's not limited then, it can be on any issue, it's limited to five minutes. If you choose to address the public, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll open up extended public comment at eight thirty PM. And seeing no one coming forward, we'll close extended public comment at eight thirty PM. That brings us to item thirteen on our agenda, Mr. Stuhl dryer, this is your spot.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, we've already mentioned, I was going to remind everybody of the cancellation of the leadership luncheon, we'll get it rescheduled for the fall. I did want to check with the, the clerk needs the town, the supervisor's office for some election-related activity, we need to keep that secure, so I kind of went around, and for those of you that do have keys, if you could drop them off, that'd be great. We'll give them back to you as soon as she's done with, with her needs there.
Do we even need them?
And, and that's if you want to, if you even.
I don't want mine back up.
And then just to add a bit to, uh, the comments made by, must have been Trustee Houck, on the, on Lincoln Road, mentioned the bid opening June twenty seventh, that is being, they are, the road commission is doing that bidding, so they were, they did get approval from MDOT to separate away from MDOT, and that allowed them to accelerate, then have a bid opening on June twenty seventh. The administration at, at the road commission has, has sent a communication to the state and to, to the MDOT and our local representative to nail down, making sure we don't lose that funding, so they have reached out to the appropriate parties. As of tonight, I'm not aware of any response, I don't think, I wouldn't anticipate that being a problem, but it was brought up, I think, even by Trustee Houck at the last meeting, that they were going to do that outreach, and they actually have executed that. And we did hear that the bidders that are likely to bid on the project, that they might have some, like everything else going on, some difficulty in acquiring some of the materials that, that they may need. So that, that communication is going on, and what it kind of leads up to in my mind is that, you know, that there, there are just a lot of problems with the supply chain, and so if, if the road commission needs MichCon to do something with gas lines, then we become dependent on MichCon being able to get supplies and materials and all that, so it's, there's a lot of moving parts out there, and I know we all have a goal to get construction work started anyways this year, and we, you know, we're just, everybody's working to make that happen, but there are some potential roadblocks in the way. And then just to, I don't know if these TVs were up the last time we met, but what, what we're in the process of doing is doing some upgrades to what I call the audiovisual part of our boardroom, with the end goal being that we'll have a, we'll be able to have a hybrids situation where residents and the township board can have essentially two-way communication during these meetings, utilizing Zoom and these TVs, and also that people that come to make presentations, their presentations can be up on these screens, which will also make them visible, properly visible to folks at home because of the way, some of the changes that are going on back there. We went through kind of a demo this afternoon, the installation has been done, the technical installation has been done, so we were starting to actually kind of work with it in a demo fashion this afternoon. Trustee Thering came in while we were doing that to review AP, so I pigeonholed him to help us and get a sense of, of what he was seeing, if he felt that that was what the board was after, and he spoke positively about that. So we're in that process, we're probably in sort of the final stages of implementing it. The rollout is going to be, I think, deliberate and slow, so that we know what we're doing before we do it live and make, try to minimize the mistakes. That's my report.
Would it be helpful for this board to sit through a brief demo before live, and so that we can actually practice with?
Yeah, we, we had a, just like, sort of like with the Zoom meetings, I, I had a role-playing board meeting, and I had sons and daughters that were playing different roles, and city manager, county administrator, just to figure out how Zoom works, and we did something similar to that this afternoon, not as formal, but we need to do more of it, and whether it's you folks participating, but we'll need people to play board members, we'll need people to play citizens that aren't in this room, and that kind of thing to, to make sure, not only do we need to understand how it operates, so you can anticipate, and all of a sudden you'll be seeing Jane Doe appearing on the screen from their easy chair at home. But it, the one thing I noticed immediately today is it really elevates the importance of the production manager in the back corner, his or her job has become much more complicated. So we have a little bit more practice to do, but we're getting close, so I just wanted to give an update to the board on that.
Thanks.
Yeah, exciting.
It is.
I want to play citizen.
That's awesome.
I would like to see it both from a board perspective and a remote perspective. That would be good to see.
Should we come in like at the next meeting, like at six thirty instead of seven, then?
I'll organize how we'll go next steps, because we have to be ready to do something by some date.
Okay.
I can't, I'm not going to guarantee that we can be ready to have a.
Okay.
This could be a major help, too, as we talked earlier about developers having engineers that are not located inside the town.
Mm-hmm.
Rather, you know, it saves them money to not have to pay the expense of.
Like that guy from Virginia that came twice.
Might, might be more useful for planning commissioner than anybody else.
This, this totally meets one of our end.
Yeah.
Goals. I mean, not, in my opinion, from what I saw and the things that I heard they discuss, it just, it more than knocked it out of the park, I mean, it exceeded whatever expectation I had, you know, so from what I could see, I'm, I'm, I'm pretty excited about, once we get to that point, I'm, I'm very excited as to what this offers our citizens, developers, and even ourselves.
It was real apparent during Zoom days, our attendance was better, just to this kind of meeting.
Right.
I mean, people being able to attend public meetings from home, obviously that brings some of its own challenges, but to be able to be more transparent, more open is, is
Getting close.
Yay. So final board member comment, Trustee Houck.
I have none.
Not.
Trustee Brown.
Just wanted, I think it was very important, and I think that I, I'm one of the trustees that is all on board with this airport car fund request that's been thrown out here to the board members. I think we should definitely, and I'm, I'm one of them, and I got my ears open for anybody else that is very interested in, 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 in funding, I think the union township board should be looking at this seriously, to show that we're part of this.
I'd certainly be in support of us partnering with the EDA on that.
Absolutely.
I do, too, because we already partner with the, you know, with that in some way, so, you know, I think that's important.
Yeah, we just need to, I, I believe it just shows leadership, too.
Yeah, I think the city really stepped up there, so that was really cool.
Yes.
So, you know. I agree with you.
Would this board like to see any kind of formal support that we can give the?
Yeah, I think so.
The crew car.
I suggest that we have one of our staff members who's chair of the airport operations board, and also supports the EDA, and I think, and he's sitting in the room. I'm pretty certain that he'll come back and suggest something that I could take to this board in terms of a contribution.
Perfect. Even gas cards.
Well, it supports our businesses, it supports the businesses in Union Township, how could we not support that? I mean, these are, this is for our business. Okay, thank you, that's all I had.
You'll have an opportunity to.
Good, thank you.
Trustee Bills.
Well, summer has started, so I'd like to say happy summer to everybody out there, and I hope we all have a great summer, that's not too darn hot, because my AC quit yesterday in the middle of that. Anyway, Bill brought up the register of deeds, and she was also at the county commission meeting last night, and she, they, they approved a proposal to archive, you know, digitize the, the books from way back when, and she said they're all the way up to nineteen eighteen now.
Wow.
Yeah. But there are rooms and rooms of these books.
Wow.
That, that this company is going to take care of, so that's pretty exciting, that that's all going to be digital, and it's all going to be accessible by your, by your computer, so that's all I had, and have a great night.
Thank you. Trustee Thering.
I would just like to comment on an email that was sent by Andrew Stuhl dryer on June fourteenth with some pictures of our grounds, and I, I agree, I just didn't want to send an email, I wanted to say something publicly that I agree, well done, and then having my drive pass McDonald Park as well, I mean, it's very pleasant to see, nicely trimmed and cut and taken care of, and I appreciate that, thank you.
I'll support that. Treasurer Rice.
I did want to let you guys know, the next board meeting, I, I was hoping you wouldn't say the next board meeting to have it ready, because I actually will not be at the next board meeting, so that means I won't be there on the eleventh. And our family is having our, we've, we've had our family vacation scheduled that, the July tenth week for a while now. I've had Mark on standby for about four or five months, and he's like, how long now?
About a decade.
And so.
I know we never come.
Yeah. And so I will not be there, so just wanted to let you guys know.
Very good. I'll be quick, Trustee Brown, thanks for bringing up the crew cab car, because that was one of the two things I was going to replug for.
You're welcome.
I also would just want to allow an opportunity, if you want, the property that the EDA agreed to purchase to demolish and restore, so that it can be useful land on Yads Drive. I have the packet right here, you can look at it. EDA packet, has it been updated, do you know, the electronic version? It's yesterday's meeting, but if anybody wants to see, there's pictures of where the property's at and what it looks like now, I'll leave this here for a little bit if you want to see it, otherwise I encourage you to go look at it on, online, because I was proud, it was a difficult decision, I think, for the EDA to take, there was a lot of deliberation, but I'm glad it was the choice that they made, and it'll improve that neighborhood and hopefully be an asset to that pick-up corridor, too. So with that.
I'll make a motion, ma'am jury.
Support.
Motion by Rice, support by Brown, all in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Aye. Pass as you now.